Ubusutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumus Lake Self-Storage in Plumus Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
Okay, seeing none, any comment from supervisors?
I'll second.
A first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you, it's approved. Next up is special presentations. We're going to take the first one on the agenda, and then we may skip around a little bit on the agenda. We're having some technical issues with our monitors, and the rest of the special presentations have some PowerPoints that the board would be important to see, so just a heads up. So, the first thing we're going to do, though, is we're going to present a proclamation to Brent Hunridge honoring his years of service. So, Brent, if you can join me up at the podium.
County of Yuba Board of Supervisors proclamation honoring probation manager Brent Hunridge. Whereas Brent grew up in Yuba County, California, graduating from Marysville High School in 1989, thereafter traveling to Japan for exhibition matches as a member of the California All-Star Wrestling Team, and whereas Brent began his career with Yuba County as an extra-help group counselor in February 1992, during which he put himself through juvenile correction core courses, receiving a letter of recommendation from the program director, and whereas Brent was hired full-time as a group counselor in 1992, promoting to Group Counselor II in 1993, supervising group counselor in 1997, and Deputy Superintendent of Institutions in 2001 overseeing all operations of the Bye County Juvenile Hall. In 2023 Brent became the probation program manager, and whereas Brent was an integral part of the California Board of State and Community Corrections Title 15 Revision Committee, and was an active site representative for the Yuba County Employee Association, and was an active member of the California Association of Probation Institution Administrators, receiving the Bryan Adams Award for Innovation in the Field of Juvenile Corrections in 2024. Congratulations. And whereas Brent's work with stakeholders was evident during the numerous project in which his work was critical, including the design and build of the Tri-County Youth Development Center completed in 2024, and his work in establishing the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support and Prison Rape Elimination Act programs within Yuba County. And whereas Brent's work ethic, passion, and pride for the criminal justice profession is to be admired, Brent has carried himself for 32 years with great integrity and character that is to be honored and celebrated. Now therefore, we proclaim for the Yuba County Board of Supervisors hereby commend Brent for his 32 years of service and commitment to the citizens of Yuba County, and congratulate him on his most honorable retirement. So, thank you.
Okay, we're still having, actually before we move on, is there any public comment on this item? Does anyone want to say anything, or any board comment?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Brent, before you leave. Brent.
Brent. Before you leave, I just wanted to thank you through the board, or through the chair, for all the services you provide to our youth in our county. The programs that you push and you stand behind, they affect all of our youngsters, and it's just a great opportunity to have you work for 30 years for this county and stand behind that program, so appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no additional board or public comment on this item, we're actually going to move down to public communications at this time. We'll come back to the remaining special presentations. Any person may speak about any subject of concern, provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of 15 minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Please note, no board action can be taken on comments made under this heading. So, for those who are here to speak on something not on the agenda, now is the time that we're doing this, so do we have some cards?
First one we have is Tony Farley.
Yeah, thank you for your service. Kevin, Chief Saxon, Chief Police, County Council, George Lady, love my George, went there yesterday in Sacramento, plus the Macy's downtown, Gray Bradford in Sacramento, next Sacramento, Washington event, hope to go there. John Misk, the cowboy farmer, yee-haw, guy. And Sethful, or the diversity chairman, I hope become diversity chairman of the board. And Supervisor House, Yuba House, Yuba House guy, Eddie Basket, over there smiling, he's funny guy, being on war vet, and kind of reserve deputy, and veteran. And also Rachel, Rachel Pio, and the enforcement and the sheriff's department, Public Works, and all that, there's Manny, big up Manny, 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 you've said the council, and thank you, also see Bill for space, civilian DOD boys, Bill for space over there, and also Jennifer from HSS, and Tony, my neighbor, Tony, over there, and thank you for your service, appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Tony.
Next we have Manny, I'm sorry, I apologize, I don't, the last name Manny Cardoza.
That's going to be a hard act to follow. Anyway, I'm Manny Cardoza, resident of Yuba City. I'm here to thank the County Board of Supervisors in closing the meeting in memory of my wife two weeks ago, Kathy Jordan, I want to thank you very much, she'd be here today, I know she'd be very proud of it, and again, thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Manny. Anyone else?
That is it.
Okay, no hands on Zoom either? Okay, with that, we're going to move into county departments. We're going to start off with 69, 2025, Board of Supervisors appoint one District Two representative to the Yuba County Planning Commission for a term ending January 9th, 2029. Two applications have been received.
So, I don't know, through the chair?
Yes.
Supervisor House? This position came open when I took over as supervisor, I asked that all applicants be reviewed and reapply for positions on our appointed commissions. We do have two applicants, and I've reviewed both of the, both the applications and taken time to speak with both parties, and at this time I'd just like to recommend Case and Night be appointed to the position, so I'd like to make that motion, that we appoint Case and Night to the Planning Commission.
Okay, there's a first and a second, and I believe there is, yes, some public comment on this item, we'll definitely take it before we vote, so any public comment? Yes, come on up.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Pamela Womack, and I would like to share some background as to why I am the best choice for the Planning Commissioner for District Two. I was born and raised in Yuba County, and I graduated from Marysville High School and earned my bachelor's degree from UC Davis. Before I went to UC Davis, I drove an 18-wheeler. I hauled agricultural products such as hay out of Nevada, rice, peaches, pears, nuts, everything, even lumber up and down Northern and Central California. As a former ag hauler in this area, I know the Yuba and Sutter areas very well indeed. I lived in the Bay Area for a long time, and while I was there, I was a designer of residential and commercial products, which provides me an experience reading and interpreting building layouts, elevations, and plot plans. As president of Keep 70 Safe, which I came before you several times, I became well-versed in highway plans, environmental impact reports, CEQA and NIPA laws. I worked tirelessly to educate the community and the board about the impacts of the five-lane project from Marysville to Oroville, including the impending impacts on the city of Marysville. The full impact we will see as Caltrans proceeds to complete Sections Three and One and Two through the city. Last year, I was fortunate to have been chosen by Don Blazer to take the place of a planning commissioner who had resigned. I enjoyed working with my fellow planning commissioners and Kevin Perkins so much, I submitted an application to continue. As I am retired, I have the time to fully review detailed materials before the Planning Commission meetings. I do my very best to understand and meet the needs of the county, property owners and developers, and the concerns of the community. My goal is to help the commission make the best recommendations to you on proposed projects. I am not employed by any entity that might present conflicts of interest with what is brought before the commission. Born and raised here, I chose to return after 30 years to make it my home once again. My heart is here, and I care deeply about Yuba County. I would be honored to be chosen to represent Yuba County District Two on the Planning Commission, and I hope that Supervisor House and the rest of you will choose me to do so. I would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Okay, seeing none.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, any additional public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, there's a, oh, we do have a public comment, okay, great.
Hi, I just wanted to take the moment. On that one. My name is Case and Night. I have been a resident for this community for over 30 years. I transplanted here by way of the Air Force, and once I got out, my wife and I have stayed here and become to love the area that we've been in. I think this area is really a key area for growth. We've been seeing it come this way from Sacramento for some time now, looking at Lincoln, looking at Plumus Lake, and my goal is for smart growth in our areas. We grow out, and I can see this being a very key area, and I think I can assist through my experience working in both private sector for 17 years and also in the public sector, working with Caltrans, I've handled contracts, I also had in their project management side of the house, so I'm familiar with requirements for agencies and working with agencies as needed, and in working through different stages of development. I think my key experience in the area will help review, look at every key issues that come up within the committees that are required to be evaluated and recommendations to be made. If you have any questions of my experience or otherwise, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you both for being here today, and there is a motion and a second, so all in, oh, go ahead.
I wanted to make a comment.
Yes.
Up here. As being a former planning commissioner here in Yuba County for 13 years, it's just, I think the only reason I was on the Planning Commission for so long is because nobody else wanted to be on the Planning Commission, so I'd like to thank both of you for really wanting the position. And, you know, I hope whichever way it goes, you know, you especially would continue to help in the community and, you know, possibly volunteer on other boards, but I was always kind of thought it was like you're the planning commissioner under the supervisor, and so I want to tell you thank you. I think you're very qualified, and thanking you for volunteering in the community, but I'm going to vote with Rennick because it's under him, but hopefully you'll move to District Five and want to do some committee center in my district. I just want to make that comment.
Thank you. Any additional board comment? Thank you, John.
Through the chair. That's pretty much the way we've done it for many, many years, is that we allow the supervisor to pick his planning commissioner, and it's not a reflection on your effort or your ability to do it, it's just that's common courtesy to the supervisor of that district, so there's nothing personal on it.
Okay. With that, there is a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next, we will move on to Item 68, 2025, Sheriff or Coroner Approved Service Agreement with MJUSD to Provide Law Enforcement Services on MJUSD School Campuses and Authorized Chair to Execute. Morning.
Good morning, Madam Council and gentlemen. I'm Nick Morzinski, I'm the UnderSheriff with the Yuba County Sheriff's Office, and we're asking for exactly that, approval from the board for the service agreement with Marysville Joint Unified School District and the Sheriff's Office to provide SRO School Resource Officers Law Enforcement presence at the local schools. So, this has been a partnership that we've been in with the Marysville Joint Unified for some time, it's been very successful. We currently have two school resource officers assigned, one full-time to Lindhurst High School, and the other roving to the remaining schools within the county. Within this service agreement, it's going to be for fiscal year 2425. There's going to be no impact whatsoever to the general fund. Marysville Joint Unified School District is footing the bill for salary and benefits for our two deputies to the tune of $262,000. So, again, this has been a great partnership that we have, I think it shows on both sides, both from the school district and from the county as well, that we value the safety of our youth and like to have those school resource officers there. So, I can answer any questions you guys may have on it.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I would make a comment, also just as important, them being on the campus, is it really lets youth know that you guys are caring and not something to fear, I guess. So, I think it's important for them to be at the schools.
I agree.
Couldn't agree more.
Yeah. Any public comment on this item?
So, Luke.
Okay.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll move on to Item 47, Community Development and Services Award Contract to the Apparent Low Responsive and Responsible Bitter, Laman Construction for Feather River Boulevard State of Good Repair Project and Authorized Chair to Execute. Morning, Sam. Did you have a PowerPoint for this too, or no?
I did have a quick map to show, but.
Okay, we can, I think we can kind of see it on the screens.
And I could use Google Maps if I'm able to share that, and I just want to show and get everybody's bearings kind of on what projects we've had in West Linda.
There we go, microphone's back on now. The monitors up here, Sam, are not working, the monitors are just out in the audience, so you can still pull up the presentation, people will be able to view it on Zoom as well.
Okay, I'll do my best, I just wanted to, since we've had a decent amount of work in West Linda, just wanted to make sure we showed which projects are going on.
Excellent. If that works, can we do the other side too? An example of the out-of-the-box talented staff that we have.
Thank you, Ezzy. Good morning, Sam Bunton, Public Works, this, all right, let me get my bearings, but good morning to the board. So, this item is Public Works Recommending Award for Construction to Laman Construction, the low responsive and responsible bidder, at $2,777,068. There's been a lot of separate projects in this area, so I just wanted to take this time to show map and kind of show the limits of what projects happen and which ones are in design relative to this project. And so, first in the red, you can see the two lines in the red, that's Cedar Lane and Alicia Avenue, that Safe Routes to School project is now complete. Just a little bit northeast of that is a purple or magenta line Garden Avenue, that one will be complete in a couple months. Those both tie into the project that we're here about today, Feather River Boulevard, that's from Arboga Avenue over to Alicia Avenue, and that's the light blue line, so that's what this construction award is for today. And then you'll see all the lines in yellow, that's the West Linda, like comprehensive Safe Routes to School project that's currently in design, that one's still a couple years away from construction, but just wanted to share this map because there's been a decent amount of different projects in this area, just to make sure we can get our bearings on which one's going on. So, with that in mind, this project will install storm drains, sidewalks, bike lanes, and new streetlights from Arboga to Alicia Avenue. The project's been funded through grants from SECOG's Regional Program and the Yuba Water Agency, and any questions from the board?
What's the distance or length of that project?
That's a great question. I don't have that number off the top of my head, oh gosh, less than a half mile, but I can't follow up with the exact distance.
It's all just curious, is the going rate right now for drainage and sidewalks for a mile, 5 million, or?
Really dependent on the width and the locality of the project, it can range anywhere, and I hate to give you a number off the top of my head, but I can follow up with some specific recent projects, if that's okay, per mile. We also have the North Bill Road Phase Three project, that'll be a good example of that as well, but be more than happy to follow up.
Any additional board comment or questions?
Through the chair. This area has never had sidewalk, curb cutters, sidewalks, haven't it?
No, so, well, to clarify, Cedar Lane and Alicia did not, Garden did not, Feather River Boulevard does have some sidewalks on the south side, we are replacing those to get them to current ADA standards and fix a lot of the other challenges out there, but some of these projects, no, this one specifically is one of the few that had some sidewalks out there, but it's the kind of commercial corridor.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much for this project.
Yeah, through the chair. Sam, I just wanted to thank you too for keeping pushing these West Linda projects forward. We had a big population increase in those Cedar Lane apartments and future park renovation and all this stuff plays a key role, so thank you for the work over there.
So, through the chair, this is going to be drainage, curb gutter sidewalk from on Feather River Boulevard, correct? Because I can't see that far, from Garden to Alicia, on both sides?
Yeah, both sides, doing some road repairs, streetlights, storm drains, sidewalks, bike lanes, virtually a complete streets project.
And we're working with all the business owners to make traffic flow in and out of their businesses during construction and accommodate them with their input for afterwards.
Yes, yeah, we have worked with some of the business owners out there as well. We've also had to get like temporary permits to enter and those types of things, temporary construction easements to be able to complete some of the work, also worked with the Country Butcher out there for a little bit of rideaway and some other things for driveway conforms, but the team will be very proactive in working with the business owners out there to try to reduce the impacts as much.
Great, that was my big concern was Country Butcher, because we can't live without our pork and beef, so, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, when is the construction going to begin?
So, as soon as we award the contract, we'll start working, or if the project was awarded, we'd start working with the contractor to get a schedule in place, and as soon as we get a schedule, we'll be working with you guys and notifying you, but typically, I mean, spring to fall would be a good timeline.
Of this year?
Yes, yeah.
Great.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a first and a second, is there any public comment on this item?
Two seconds.
Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes, thank you, Sam. Next up is 68, 2025, Community Development and Services Award Contract to the Apparent Low and Responsive and Responsible Bitter, R&amp;R Pacific Construction for the Hamilton-Smartsville Road Shoulder Widening Project. Taking this one too, Sam, I assume?
Good morning again to the board, Sam Bunton, Public Works. This project starts at Dulittle Gate, where we are currently improving the road through our curve correction, and continues 2.7 miles east on Hamilton-Smartsville Road. The project originated after being successful in the 2021 Regional Program with SECOG, where we received approximately $2.7 million. We then, after that, swapped those funds with another project to quote-unquote "defederalize" it, which our North Bill Road, which made this locally funded, saved time and money, so that was the purpose of that, so this one in Dulittle, we were able to do that on, so very grateful, but that helped us expedite and get this project to where it is today. And so, this project will replace culverts, widen the shoulders, overlay the road, making the roadway safer and extending the service life. Recently, we received bids for the project in R&amp;R Pacific Construction with the low responsive and responsible bidder at $2,518,418. And then Public Works Recommends Award to R&amp;R Pacific Construction, and questions from the board?
Questions and comments from board members?
Thank you to SECOG for sending a representative down, Mr. Corless, I move to approve.
Okay, there's a first and a second, any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, it looks like we've got one more from Community Development, 91, 2025, Approve Subrecipient Agreement with SECOG for the East Linda Gateway-Lindhurst Corridor Revitalization Project.
Sam Bunton, again, Public Works, I didn't have a chance to mention to James, but it is a SECOG heavy day for Public Works, so very grateful for you guys. So, this project is linked to, or is listed in the strategic plan and is ultimately a complete streets project on North Bill Road, Lindhurst Avenue from Earl Road to State Route 70 at the north. This will design sidewalks, bike lanes, landscaping, lighting, and drainage, improvements to transform the corridor into a welcoming point for Linda. Luckily, SECOG gave us the opportunity, included this project in their USDOT application that was recently awarded, and this project gained 3 million of that award. So, today's item is a subrecipient agreement between Yuba County and SECOG, as SECOG is acting as the pastor entity between Yuba County and USDOT. Questions from the board?
Board comments or questions?
So, move. Second.
Okay, first and a second, any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I just do have a quick comment, all three of these projects are great for the community, there's a lot of amazing things going on in Linda, both east and west, I know this is a corridor that the county's been really focused on cleaning up and improving, and we have some great retail and things coming in there, and so it's really exciting to see this, so definitely appreciate staff and SECOG's work on this. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes.
Can I ask you, Sam, a question before he leaves? The last one out there from the Dulittle Gate, when will that one, when will construction begin on that one?
So, similar to Feather River Boulevard, is now that the project's awarded, we can start working with their contractor on a schedule. With Dulittle Gate being suspended through winter, we'll want to make sure that we coordinate those two projects together. So, it's definitely another spring to fall, but as we get some specific dates, and since that's such a critical emergency evacuation route, we'll definitely be on top of, I mean, hopefully we'd be proactive anyways, but we'll cross our Ts and dot our Is and follow up with the schedule, but we'll need to. up with the schedule, but we'll need to coordinate it with the Doolittle Gate.
So also, you know, there's an airshow going to be happening out there in June?
Yes.
They'll coordinate with that as well?
Yes, and so we'll make sure to coordinate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. One more item under County Departments, 85, 2025. County Administrator Adopt Resolution Establishing Code of Conduct for Elected Members of the Yuba County Board of Supervisors. Morning, Kevin.
Yes, good morning, Chair, members of the board. Kevin Allen, Yuba County Administrator. So the item before you today is in response to board direction provided to staff at the December 19th Board of Supervisors meeting, where the board adopted a resolution, and there was several action items in that resolution, one of them being for staff to present back to the board for their consideration of code of conduct for the board. Now, Yuba County currently does not have a code of conduct for its board members, and so this would be something new for the organization. So myself and our county council and our human resources director, we did a little bit of research, took a look at what other counties and cities as well are doing in this area, and there's quite a few examples throughout the state of organizations that have established code of conduct for their elected boards and councils. So we pulled from that and then also pulled from the board's adopted strategic plan. The county's strategic plan that was adopted by the board in July of 2023 outlined eight organizational values. It is part of our purpose and direction as an organization. We also made sure it was clear what our values were as an organization, so we pulled from that as well. And so the code of conduct before the board this morning for your consideration, kind of pulled from all of that, and what we've proposed is a code of conduct that has nine principal areas. And so those nine areas are public trust and responsibility, integrity and honesty, conflicts of interest, respect for others, confidentiality, commitment to accountability, compliance with laws and regulations, promotion of public participation, and responsibility in public decision-making. And so under each one of those nine topic areas, there are some bullet points with statements that are included in the code of conduct. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has about the draft that's been presented before you today.
Any comments or questions from board members?
Through the chair. Basically, it's suggestions, though, because there's no real penalties or anything, is there?
So the code of conduct, each of you is an elected member to this board, elected by the people of Yuba County, and so ultimately that accountability is with the electorate. And there are, though, within the code of conduct, and I believe it's under number six, under commitment to accountability, and I'll just read the statement. "I commit to act in accordance with applicable Yuba County policies, including but not limited to policies against harassment, discrimination, retaliation, workplace violence, employer-employee relations, and the guiding principles of this code of conduct, and acknowledge that I may be censured or have other associated actions imposed upon me as determined by a majority of the board to be necessary." So that would be what you're acknowledging as part of this code of conduct.
Go ahead, through the chair. I have a comment. Thank you for preparing this. I wasn't part of the board that adopted that resolution. I feel like our, the fact that we are sworn to uphold the Constitution, local and state laws and ordinances, pretty well covers a lot of this, everything that's protected by law. The part of this that I can't agree with is that any outside influence over political decisions can create doubt and can create influence in the political process, and I'd hate to have this become a political entrapment in the future, and so for that reason, I can't vote yes on this. I do understand it's a feel-good thing to say that we'll have honesty, integrity, and report conflicts of interest. We also have state laws, federal laws that address all of those things. And so, yes, yeah, I thank you for preparing it at the request of the December board.
I'll make a, I'd like to make a comment through the chair. So following Renick's comments, and I spoke with Renick about this the other day, would it be okay if we decided to put together an ad hoc committee to, of our board, to go over this and then bring it back to the board at another time? To give people, our board, more time to review it? I know the other elected's elected to not be involved in this, so maybe we spend a little more time on this and make sure we're all comfortable with it.
I would be, I'd be fine with that, and I would recommend, if you're willing, I'd recommend you and Supervisor House be on that ad hoc committee.
I'd be willing to do that.
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay, so as a, I know we can't take formal action, but is there consensus among the board to establish that? Okay. Is that correct, council?
This is related to this agenda item. I believe your board could go ahead and take the ad and set up the ad hoc committee, or you could agendize it for our next meeting if you prefer.
I think as far as I'm concerned, we could just do it now, there's consensus if we're able to vote on that, so.
I'll make a motion that we set up an ad hoc committee of myself and Supervisor House and go over this and bring it back at a future date, and acknowledging that the county did fulfill their obligation to bring it to us within 90 days. So if we go beyond the 90 days, no punishment to stay.
Second then.
Okay, any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, there's a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
No.
One opposition, okay. So with that, we're going to move back to special presentations, just so the presenters are aware, the technical issue that we're experiencing is still happening, and it's just that our monitors directly in front of us are not working, so the board will be able to see your presentation to some extent on the monitors that are in the audience. But if there's any small print, we won't be able to read it, but we'll get a general idea as what's going on. So we're going to start off with the first item on the list, which is receive presentation on Beal Air Force Base Airshow, which will be June 7th and 8th, 2025.
Wow. So you got some top gun shots?
Good morning. If I can do this.
That's fine, let's go ahead. We can see fine.
All right, good morning. I am Emily Reary, and I want to thank you all for having Beal come and present to you today about our air and space expo that is going to be June 7th and 8th this summer. It's the first Saturday in June. We are privileged this year to have the Thunderbirds come. That lovely preview of the Thunderbirds, and we have the YouTube Dragon Lady, which most of you see on a daily basis, but 70 years at 70,000 feet is our, very excited to get to show the community all of the things that the Air Force does, and their airmen and our air power and our capabilities. We will also have some civilian and military acts perform in addition to the Thunderbirds, and we're going to have an awesome STEM and kids' area for the families. So it's very family-friendly, open to the public, it's very, very exciting when everybody gets. So this is our STEM area or proposed STEM area. We've got quite a few fun things to include, some great little mini Thunderbirds that the kids can drive around on the little track. The Girl Scouts are probably coming. We've got some other fun, hands-on, STEM-focused activities. Their, get their brains going and get them excited about all of the things that are available, not just in the military and in the Air Force, but even in our local community. So the Thunderbirds will come in, and there will be some temporary flight restrictions. I apologize, I am not a pilot, so I can't speak to that part very well, but I am happy to pass on any questions that you may have about this. Friday is our STEM Day, it's also our DOD, our Holder Day, so what we do in practice. A lot of the schools are out. Final day of school or school has just ended, but we will still work with some of the schools or some programs to try to bring some of the kids out a day early to get that hands-on experience. But the STEM will go all weekend, so we do recommend that everybody tries to come. Hoping for, I think about 8,000 cars, 25,000 people each day, so that is a lot of traffic, a lot of good business, a lot of busy times, so be prepared. It will be free to attend, but parking will be limited. So we are going to ask that everybody go to bealairshow.com and get tickets for parking. We are working with the Beal Military Liaison Council, Nall, to get some local vendors and volunteer participation and really make a really positive impact on the community. And I'm going to let them...
Thank you, I'm Jamie Nall, and Sammy Nall is to my left, your right, I guess, and we are Beal Military Liaison Council, and we are the advocates for Beal versus, you know, including quality of life, advocating for robust missions at Beal, thus making Yuba County bigger and better. But we are here because we are so excited to collaborate with Beal Air Force Base on presenting and supporting Beal for the airshow, which is again June 7th and 8th. And I know that we could not do this without the county of Yuba. There is, as you saw before, I think a couple of slides back about increased traffic flow, and I know that you have agreed to assist Beal in trying to make things as efficient and easy on those attendees that are coming. So we thank you and appreciate your support. We do have some things that we are doing to support the airshow and to present the civilian air acts and a lot of things that you're going to see, not only up in the sky but on the ground. And I'm going to let Sammy talk to you about some of the experiences and some of the things that are happening. Sammy?
About that, but, so yeah, we are helping collaborate, some volunteers, sponsorships, as well as creating some elevated experiences. All funds that are generated are going back to help put on the airshow, so we're really appreciative of that. I don't know, is there another, there's another. So yes, these are some of the ways that you can support is, you know, volunteers, we are working, and we will be asking the surrounding committees for a lot of volunteers. So if anybody is interested in helping out at the airshow, you can go to bealairshow.com to sign up to be a volunteer, to become a vendor. We are also looking at that, as well as sponsorship opportunities, and elevated experiences are up for sale right now. So I don't know if the board, if there's anything else wanted to comment on, but if anybody has any questions, we're happy to entertain those, as well as, here's some contact information for the airshow.
Through the chair. Is the main gate going to be open for this whole, for these two days? Who had paved it, thought you could use it then?
Yes, so the, the Wietling Gate, the Schneider Gate, which is the main gate, and the Doolittle Gate will all be open to, for traffic flow on and off the base. The housing gate on the other side, the Vassar Lake Gate, that's going to be military-only for our families that live on the installation and for our military members that get to keep on working even while we're having so much fun.
Okay.
One thing we do want to remind you is that because Beal is limited in their parking, even though we have 23,000 acres, parking is limited. So entry onto the base will be via parking pass only. If you don't have a parking pass that's on the dash of your car, you will not be able to get in. And the purpose of that is to make the flow easier and to ensure a pleasant experience from the moment you get that pass to when you leave to go home after a great, great day. So you can get your parking passes at bealairshow.com. Admission is free onto the airshow, so there is no charge. There is complimentary parking as well, but that complimentary parking, you have to have that pass, and that pass will not be available until March 31st. You can, however, get a parking pass if you purchase an experience. Again, I sound like a TV ad. Bealairshow.com.
Okay. Through the chair. Thank you for the presentation, Jamie and Sammy. Thank you for letting me be a part of the Beal Liaison Committee, because going down to Nellis and seeing the Thunderbird Museum is going to make it even more exciting for me to watch the Thunderbirds. I still have my little Thunderbird gliders at home that we got down there. And then Emily, you said there's going to be a TFR for the weekend. Do you know the parameters of that TFR? Because we are still an agricultural community and we still need to spray crops. Do you know how far out it's going to go? It's going to be wider than the current Glass Charlie airspace there?
I will have to have Lieutenant Colonel Gorman get back to you on that, sir, but I will have him.
Oh, okay.
Unfortunately, he had official duties today, so.
Yeah.
You got stuck with me, I apologize.
Yeah, no, so just because I would like to personally go out and let all the crop testing companies in Yuba and center area know, because a lot of different ones.
Absolutely, I will follow up with you.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then I will ask my Aero Squadron if they want to volunteer, because we're all pilots, we have a dinner coming up. If you want to take one of these out of the base and post at Yuba, certainly can, I have a whole bunch of them. But we volunteer for airshows and things like that, so, well, so, thank you. Thanks for the presentation.
There are other groups in the area, is the Chamber of Commerce going to be involved?
Yes.
Awesomely not.
We have got lots of people involved.
Yeah, through the chair. I just like to put it out there, I teach welding, and we have brand-new mobile welding equipment on order, thanks to Yuba River Endowment, and so we'd love to be able to come out there and do a presentation, maybe on your STEM Day.
Absolutely, please, please reach out, we are happy to look into all of the options.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you guys for being here, very exciting. Any public comment on this item? Seems we have some. Okay.
I just want you to be aware, my contact is on this screen. You can reach out at any time. I help organize the STEM side and the kids' zone side. I work with the morale, welfare, and recreation portion. My daily job is for our airmen during the airshow, it's for you guys, too. So it's making sure that you get to have fun, and you get to present, and all of those things during these moments. So go ahead and reach out with any ideas that fly across your head at all. I am here to work with you and see if we could make it work for everybody. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Any additional public comment? Okay, great, thank you guys for coming, very, very exciting. So I'll need to remember to go and get my ticket for parking. So next up is receive an update from Sacramento Area Council of Governments on the 2025 Blueprint Project, and as James is coming up to the podium to load his presentation, I have a couple introductory comments. So I've had the pleasure of serving or representing Yuba County at Secog since 2021, and one of the things I've learned is that locally, is that local leaders, it's important to understand how our planning decisions here in Yuba County not only impact Yuba County, but also the rest of the region, and the same is true in cities and counties elsewhere in the region. So we're connected to the rest of this region and how we design transportation, infrastructure, and development in our individual jurisdictions, definitely has an impact across the entire region. Yuba County residents shop, recreate, and work in the rest of the region and vice versa. I mean, Beal's a perfect example of that. and work in the rest of the region and vice versa. I mean, Beal's a perfect example of that. Hard Rock, Toyota Amphitheater, we have people coming here for, uh, employment and recreation. Uh, and this is especially important because we are facing tough realities around transportation funding and we can't build everything we like to. Um, I think we all understand that. There's some large projects here we want in Yuba County. And, uh, if, if, uh, funding was unlimited, uh, they'd all be built. Um, it's critical that we're strategic and prioritize, uh, our investments both here in our county, uh, and, and across the region as a whole. And SECOG plays a key role in advocating for the communities in the region at the state and federal levels. Uh, I think we saw some examples of that earlier today on the agenda, uh, where there's been funding coming to Yuba County, uh, for projects that we care about. Uh, and so working together to identify our shared priorities, SECOG helps the region be more competitive for funding and support our projects. Uh, I've definitely seen that when we've gone on advocacy trips to DC or Sacramento. Um, and we speak with a regional voice or, um, at the state level even more so with a mega-regional voice. Uh, when we, uh, bring in projects that are supported by both the Bay Area, the Sacramento Region and San Joaquin County. The legislators, uh, really perk up and, and listen to that, uh, because there's such widespread support across a large population of the state for those projects. So James Corliss is the Executive Director of SECOG and he's here to talk about the region's, uh, long-range transportation and land use plan, which is being called the 2025 Blueprint. So with that, James, I'll turn it over to you.
Chair Bradford, Supervisors, thank you very much for having me this morning. Um, it was a very happy coincidence that you had your staff come up here earlier and as you mentioned, talk about some of the projects frankly, that we have partnered on, right? That we have partnered on. Um, I'd also say not to, not to bury the lead here, um, but one of my takeaways is Chair Bradford, you just sort of set up is, um, transportation funding is only gonna get more tight in the next few years. And one of the strategies we have to deploy is try to flex our muscle and state capital. Uh, get back to DC as much as we can, things like cap to cap. And frankly, I'll just say you have some of the best staff in this region who know how to write grants, who know how to pitch projects and actually get things funded. I wanna actually, uh, we wanna use them and just to do a masterclass on how to write a grant and bring, bring money back to Yuba County or any local jurisdiction. So I just wanna give a, a big shout out. And you're gonna, uh, we're gonna hear a little bit from your staff as part of this presentation. So you all understand how your local priorities in Yuba County fit into this long-range plan. So, um, as you said, Chair Bradford, we've been working on, and this is part of what we do as a council of governments and a federally recognized metropolitan planning organization. We gotta put a long-range plan together every, every four years. We look out in this plan all the way out to the year 2050. Um, as you say, we're calling that the blueprint. Now, I think you know a little bit about us, but we are the council of governments. We represent all six counties and every single jurisdiction in that six-county region. One of the things that makes this region special, but that table so unique, is that every single jurisdiction, every county, every city sits around that table. Most regions have to actually rotate seats because they have so many incorporated cities. Uh, we do not. We have 22 incorporated cities, so we can fit around one table twice a month. And we have those discussions and, uh, sometimes those debates, but as you say, the end of the day, we come together. We, we, we generate consensus and we speak with the one regional voice. So this plan is really governed by what we call a triple bottom line framework, which is equity, economy and environment. We're trying to maximize, uh, making sure that we speak to every part of this region and all of our diverse populations, that we grow a strong prosperous economy, that we are not just simply reliant on being the state capital of California and the government for our economic prosperity. Beal Air Force Base is a great example of, of local jobs, right? As, as you know, as, um, uh, the hospital ride out and, um, up here, how those things are so important. We want a clean, sustainable environment with healthy air, clean water and everything else. So in this process, the last couple of years, we've frankly done more outreach and engagement than we've done for any, any other plan, uh, in the last 20 years. And, uh, we've developed a lot of principles, uh, that we've kind of crystallized. A lot of this outreach, uh, we've done, uh, we've done surveys, we've done a, we've done multiple pop-up events in every county in the six-county region. Uh, we've done focus groups, we've done a regional poll. And so we kind of boiled all of that down to, you know, where are, where's the public? Where are the residents of this region? How do they think about growth and the future and transportation and mobility? And one of the first things that we have heard, one of the top issues we've heard is housing. So speaking generally across the region, uh, right? Housing costs, housing prices have gone up. Uh, we are one of the fastest growing regions in California, but we haven't been building enough housing to keep up with that demand. And, and that basically has lent to a lack of housing. It's lent to a, a crisis in terms of people being able to afford, uh, to stay here. We think about our kids and our grandkids. Um, so we need to build more housing. We need to build, build more housing types and options, as we heard from one uh, participant in some of our outreach. We need housing options to accommodate every stage of life. Uh, so this is just an example of the survey that we put out in all six counties. And again, the top three, uh, top three challenges that your community is facing. Number one, affordable housing and the lack of housing. Number two, crime and public safety. Uh, number three, the lack of transportation options and choices. And number four, traffic congestion. So maybe not too surprising to all of you, but, uh, that's what we've heard. So what have we learned when we've done our analysis? Again, uh, we have to look out 25 years. We have to take all kinds of demographic and economic data. And I think as, uh, as, as I've mentioned here, and I think it was mentioned on the dais earlier, we are one of the fastest growing regions in California. So if you follow the green line up there, that is the six-county SECOG, uh, greater Sacramento region. Our average annual population growth rate is far higher than the US and far higher than the rest of the state. So as the rest of the state has lost population in different regions, our region has grown. And in the 2020 census, we were the fastest growing metropolitan region in the entire state. That population growth rate is going to remain above our, our forecast, main, above the average growth rate in California and the US. But it is going to slow down. And it's gonna slow down because of a lot of just demographic trends that are happening everywhere and in a lot of industrialized countries. But the fact remains, uh, especially coming out of the Great Recession in the last 15 years, we've underproduced housing. So we lost a lot of housing production opportunity in the last 15 years. We are, we are beginning in the last couple of years to just climb back up in terms of number of housing permits. A lot of that, by the way, you can find on our website, um, on our regional monitoring report. So we are seeing more permits, but we have a deficit, right? We're basically trying to dig ourselves out of a hole. What does that look like in terms of the region? So we're 2.5 million people in the greater Sacramento six-county region. That actually puts us around 25th largest metropolitan region in the United States. Uh, we may not think about that. Um, but that is the fact. We're gonna, we, we forecast there will be another 600,000 people here by 2050. So we're gonna go from 2.1 million to 3.1 million. That is about the population of metropolitan Denver today. And in fact, we just took a tour with the SECOG Board out to Denver last summer, uh, because we were looking at some of the choices they made 20 years ago in the Denver metro region, right? Which were important to basically facilitate that growth. As we like to say, it's not if we grow, it's how. So 600,000 more people, 260,000 more jobs and 278,000 more housing units across the region. That looks like in unincorporated Yuba County, at least another roughly 20,000 people, 6,200 jobs and 7,500 housing units. Uh, type of growth and the placement of growth, uh, is a, is a big question. Um, a lot of that growth is gonna be accommodated on the existing, what we call developed or urbanized footprint. But there will also be some growth in new growth areas. And you certainly have those here in Yuba County. I'm sure we'll get into that a little bit more, but, um, the Plumas Lake specific plan is super important. The sports and entertainment zone is super important, but we have those other areas that around the region will accommodate about a third of all future growth in the region. All right. So where are we going? Um, I'll give this over now to Sam and to Kevin to say, tell you a little bit more about what's happening here in Yuba County and what are those kinds of priorities that roll up into our regional plan and our vision. So, go ahead, Sam.
Good morning to the board again. Sam Bunton, Public Works. Thanks, James, for inviting us up. Uh, so I'm gonna quickly discuss a few projects that have been highlighted by SECOG and are important to Yuba County. Uh, the first project is the East Linda Gateway, the Lenders Corridor Revitalization Project. This project spans from Earl Road at the south to State Route 70 at the north. And this select project is listed in Yuba County Strategic Plan and will transform, uh, as mentioned earlier, the corridor as a welcoming entry point into Linda. Uh, with new sidewalks, bike lanes, landscaping, lighting and drainage improvements. This project will make transportation upgrades and help make the area safe and inviting for residents. Moving over to Olivehurst is the Olivehurst Roadway Climate Resiliency Project. This $50 million award from the CTC or the California Transportation Committee or Commission will transform a large portion of Olivehurst, uh, to not only protect the residents from flooding, but also improving how residents and schoolchildren get around. This project is amazing in the sense that it improves safety by reducing flood risk and creating safer paths, uh, but also improving mobility and alternate modes of transportation. And that project will likely begin construction in 2027. Uh, lastly, I'll mention the Plumas Lake Boulevard Interchange Phase Two Project. This project has been planned for many decades and since the inception of Plumas Lake. Uh, it removes a railroad crossing to improve safety, improves connectivity to the sports entertainment zone, connects our Bear River Habitat Trail to Plumas Lake Boulevard and complements any future stop to the North Valley Rail. And luckily, Yuba County was recently awarded $35 million from the USDOT's Rural Program to fully fund construction. Uh, this is a big one for the county and the project will likely begin construction in 2027. Uh, and so at this point, I'll pass over the presentation to Kevin to chat a little bit about land use, but I'll be here if there's any questions for me.
Thanks, Sam and James. I'm Kevin Perkins with Community Development. What I really wanna talk to you guys today about is the, the land use strategy that our board has, your board has, um, implemented over the few years um, to get us to where we are. And with consistency with the, the SECOG blueprint and, and what we plan on doing in the future. Um, you know, this, this 25, uh, blueprint is gonna go out to 2050. And so there's some land use plans that we need to update as, as a county that I'll, I'll discuss. First of all, I wanna talk about our growth, um, James is talking about our growth, um, footprint. Um, in terms of focused growth, in 2011, your board approved our general plan update that, that created our valley growth boundary. The significance of the valley growth boundary is that's where your board decided where we wanna focus all our urbanized growth. Um, you know, we wanted to make sure that growth was in one area, that we were able to protect our ag resources, that we didn't put growth in flood zones, fire zones, and of course, that we didn't have growth encroaching on Beal Air Force Base to protect Beal from, from future growth. So we've, I think that we've done a pretty good job with that valley growth boundary. One of the other things that we've done in terms of focused growth is, uh, emphasis on infill housing. Um, over the last few years, we've, we've done a really great job of making sure that our housing and our Linda and Olivehurst area is getting better. And also, um, one of the things that your board has given staff the opportunity to move forward with was our pro-housing designation. We received the pro-housing designation that will allow us to be more competitive on housing-related grants in, in the, the county that will help with affordable housing and other housing as well. Um, as part of that, that pro-housing designation, one of the things I'm mostly proud of is we were the, one of the first jurisdictions that are, um, of our demographics to receive that in the state, a semi-rural, smaller county, which was, was, you know, something I was proud of. CDSA, CDSA staff for, for moving forward with. Lastly, in terms of focused growth, one of the things that we are planning right now is, as James mentioned, um, more economic development and job creation in our airport and also the sports and entertainment zone. Um, the last thing I wanna mention before I, um, pass it back to James is, um, our future growth. And one of the things that your board will see in the next couple of meetings is an RFP. The county is getting ready. I know we've talked about it, um, a few times at budget presentations and et cetera. But the county is getting ready to submit an RFP to update our general plan and also update the Plumas Lake specific plan. The general plan, I expect to be somewhat of a general plan light to make sure that our growth projections are out to 2050. In 2011, when you adopted the general plan, it was the 2030. So we're probably gonna look out to 2050 with this new general plan update. And the other long-range planning document that we plan on updating is the Plumas Lake specific plan. Um, I'm really excited about the Plumas Lake specific plan update. It's gonna give us the opportunity to reimagine the areas in Plumas Lake that haven't grown. Um, and also look, as James mentioned, at different housing types within Plumas Lake. Right now, the predominant housing choice in Plumas Lake is single-family residential. And as part of this plan, staff will, will look at other housing options, multi, um, multifamily housing, fourplexes, townhouses, things of that nature. So that's what I have for the land use, um, strategies that your board has adopted and CDSA is, is following as part of this blueprint. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I really appreciate your, your staff coming up here and giving you that update because we often get the question, okay, so this is a big regional plan. It goes out a long way. It covers 28 jurisdictions. How do I show up in the plan, right? How does my jurisdiction show up in the plan? How do you, how do you see me? And this plan, we're doing something a little bit different, which is we are literally what your staff just walked through. We're gonna have every jurisdiction have a piece of this plan where it's gonna outline your priorities as a jurisdiction in the plan, right? So, um, your staff mentioned the pro-housing designation for the, from the state of California to Yuba County. That's huge. But, uh, we actually have more pro-housing designations per jurisdiction here in this region than anywhere else. But kudos to you and your staff for getting that. And the fact that we can tell a story, the fact that you understand how your local priorities and what you need for the county fits into a regional vision. I, and the fact that you got great staff who write good grant applications is part of the reason frankly, that you're being successful pulling down these grants. So I think it's a great example of a partnership. I just wanna say finally, this is not a one-size-fits-all plan, right? That's why every single jurisdiction will show up a little bit differently. Uh, it's not a one-size-fits-all, but it is trying to be greater than the sum of our parts. It is trying to be greater than the sum of our, uh, just individual jurisdictions so that we can have that, uh, ability to pull down some of these grants. Now let's, uh, I mean, you heard a little bit about some of your transportation, uh, priorities and, um, we know some of the challenges that are related to, um, frankly, a, a squeeze on funding going forward. Uh, we've heard a lot again from a lot of our outreach about really trying to prioritize maintenance and fixing our existing, uh, transportation infrastructure. Safety is a huge topic. If we heard a lot about housing in our outreach, we also heard a lot about safety and transportation safety and traffic safety. Uh, we wanna understand how we can better use technology to maximize existing capacity. An example of that, a great example of that, is if you've driven US 50, uh, through Placerville up towards South Lake Tahoe. Uh, those three traffic lights become the, the huge backup every weekend and every long holiday. And you're sitting there forever, right? Trying to get through Placerville. Placerville, and they long looked at a, a, a project that would cost hundreds of millions of dollars to build flyovers over, over that section in Placerville. But for pennies on the dollar, they have tested now something called Tript to Green, which is basically stopping traffic. It's very low cost. It's a pilot project. Basically on weekends, stopping traffic crossing because they have ways to get around and get over and making those traffic lights just turn green the whole time and stay green. So that's pennies on the dollar of those flyovers. And frankly, the first weekend that they tested this was the weekend of the Calder Fire. And so it was a huge evacuation. It became an evacuation strategy, right? As well as a traffic flow strategy. Just say a little bit more about the next steps on this long-range plan. We are in the final phase here. Uh, we're gonna be releasing the draft plan and the EIR for public comment in a couple of months in May. Uh, and we're gonna be adopting, our SECOG Board will adopt this plan, uh, at the end of this year in November. And that plan will become our regional plan. Again, the, the, the fact of, uh, your projects and your priorities fitting into that plan are gonna be incredibly important. Um, of course, then we take that plan and we, uh, we don't wanna just have it set on a shelf or on a website. We actually wanna implement that plan. And so there's a number of ways in which we can implement it. One of which is coming up, uh, actually in the next couple of months is our, is our, is our next set of funding. You heard about some of the grants that you have been successful at, uh, from SECOG in the past. Uh, that next kind of call for projects is coming out here starting in March. And then next year, we'll have an even bigger six-county call for projects for federal transportation funding. And then I just wanna end on a little bit of what Chair Bradford had mentioned. We are, we are both a fast-growing six-county region, but we are increasingly interdependent in the Northern California mega-region. So we have an MOU, a National Working Group with the Bay Area Metropolitan Transportation Commission, San Joaquin County. San Joaquin County. In fact, Chair Bradford is the vice chair of that mega-region working group this year. And this is the thing, that as we go around to the state Capitol and Congress, we show these projects that are in here that are both highway and passenger rail projects, frankly, to connect the mega-region. And the feedback we always get is incredibly positive. And what they tell us is, so wait, you weren't required to do this? You're not mandated to work together? You just want to work together? Because that's actually, makes a lot of sense? And we flex our muscle better when we're together? And we say, yeah, absolutely. Nobody told us to do this. But now with migration and people leaving the coast and the San Francisco Bay Area and moving up here and the travel patterns that are increasingly complex and interdependent, we think that this is absolutely the strategy going forward. And some of those rail projects, which we're hoping will connect the Central Valley and the San Joaquin Valley with Sacramento, are also, as has been mentioned, part of now the North Valley Rail project. And so this is literally putting Marysville, Yuba City, and I will say Plumas Lake, the little dot underneath Marysville, Yuba City, there is Plumas Lake, on the map. So this is the North Valley Rail project. It will extend the San Joaquines and the ACE trains coming north. It's, be patient on this, but we are trying to push as hard as we can. You've got great partners in Butte County as well that has been leading a lot of this planning with the state of California. So this is, again, an extension of conventional passenger rail service. It is on existing right-of-way and existing tracks, but it would be a huge boon running from Chico to Gridley to Marysville to Plumas Lake, connecting to Elkhorn Boulevard and a connection to the San Francisco Airport, and then through Midtown, and then eventually down into the Bay Area and down into the Central Valley. So the name of the game, as I mentioned when I started this, really is we are stronger together. This plan is really a foundation for you to be able to successfully go after some of these state and federal grants. And I really see, and I hope I leave you with this message among others, that it is really up to us to be a team. We're doing a little king's spirit here. So we really do. We've got to unite as a region. We're super diverse. We're very different. We all come from different kinds of places, urban, suburban, and rural. We respect your agricultural economy up here, but we also know you need more jobs and you have a lot of growth in front of you. And most importantly, a lot of these projects are going to depend on our ability to unite and to advocate as a region with a common voice and a single voice. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Questions and comments from board members?
You had a slide that talked about different things. One of them was mobility zone. What qualifies as a mobility zone?
Yeah, good question. So we've got a, we have a federal grant to implement these mobility zones. There'll be at least one in every county. I didn't really, I did not mention either, by the way, Yuba Sutter Transit. The next-gen transit facility here is going to be super critical. And also their experimentation with micro-transit, sort of the on-demand. Can we get sort of a point-to-point? If you can't get fixed route transit to work right on a regular schedule because you just don't get enough riders, can you actually do something that's on-demand that picks people up at their doors? So mobility zones are the idea that what if we could actually ask neighborhoods and communities to kind of imagine and help us create transportation solutions, right? So all too often, myself, as a recovering transportation planner, we tend to think we have the answer for people, like we know exactly what you need, and here's the answer, and just take it, right? We don't do a good enough job sometimes at actually engaging communities in the kinds of things that they need. There's a great example in the city of Roseville. They went down and worked with their core neighborhoods in downtown Roseville near the rail yards, and they thought, well, they need a grocery store. Well, we know. It's obvious they need a grocery. Here's the map, you know? And what the community said is, no, actually, we need streetlights and sidewalks because it's unsafe. And so they gave them a different house. So the idea behind mobility zones is to pick at least a zone in every county where we're doing it with your staff and with a lot of community-based organizations. And then do an intensive deep dive with those communities to help them co-create some transportation solutions. Could be very low cost. They kind of have to be. And then we've held some money aside in that grant to actually then fund kind of the pilot projects that would be kind of neighborhood and community-driven.
Do we have one currently in Yuba County?
Stay tuned. Stay tuned. There will be. There will be one in every county, at least one. Then there'll be, I think, a 10 region-wide. So every county gets at least one. It's completely experimental, and we're trying to learn as we go.
The reason I was asking is, is I was on a call recently, and they were talking about grant points. And I wasn't sure if the mobility zone was part of generating those grant points. They were doing a collaborative effort with a development that's happening in Olivehurst. And so I was curious, does that increase the chance and opportunity for grants?
I would say not yet because what we're doing is so locally driven here. This is kind of our idea, but the idea would be if we can do this, and it, you know, it actually, there's a there there, right? Your staff can then say, hey, this is part of this mobility zone effort that has been led. And then it's up to all of us to then make that have more grant points. Like, that's what we want. We want to basically try to get those things rewarded, right?
Okay.
So stay tuned.
The only other thing is, is I'm really happy about our housing designation. If you could also put in that we have the jobs and business designation.
Sure.
So Supervisor, if you're, just to let you know, at a recent, I think it was at a board meeting, but it may have been a committee meeting, the SECOG board or committee received an update on mobility zones. And I'll look for that presentation. It's on video. I can send it out to the rest of the board so folks can get a little more familiar with that. But if I'm remembering correctly, I believe at the current phase, there are two areas in Yuba County that are being looked at. One is the Olivehurst-Linda area, and I believe the other is Brownsville. Brownsville, so.
So I was going to update you on that real quick. Andy, it is Brownsville. I've been working closely with Camp Townville Community Partners, and we've had several community meetings up there to get ourselves in a position to win this mobility grant.
Plus, we're going to have a biomass plant up there, which is going to provide a lot of. One of the things that I think Kevin kind of sort of went right over is the amount of lots in the pipeline now. You just, you didn't mention it, but we got 5,000 lots in the pipeline now in Yuba County. And I just plan on growth continuing at a rapid pace.
And you saw the numbers that I gave you earlier, just in terms of households and population, right? So that does square.
Okay. Well, I just want to mention it. We're sleepy little county.
Through the chair, there was the transit agency meeting that SECOG gave us the presentation on the zones. And yeah, there's three in our Yuba Sutter area, which is kind of carries a lot of weight because there was only seven, I think, others in all the rest of those counties. So it was pretty, pretty great work, our local leaders bringing those projects here and lobbying for that kind of stuff, those studies to be done here to how we can improve our transit opportunities and our walkability zones. I also wanted to thank our county staff for continuing to push forward, that we don't just build houses and, because every time I get a question about why this subdivision doesn't have any services and why it's not really walkable or why somebody's speeding through a neighborhood, it's because there's a map we generated in 1992 or something of that nature, is the answer. So forward-thinking for the next 30 years. Appreciate that, and I'm sure all of the residents in the future will too.
Did not get to mention, actually, the trails map. So we took, we had a grant, we developed a six-county regional trails plan. So paved trails to connect every corner, every corner of the six-county region. It's about, we would need to build about 1,000 miles of fill in the gaps, but there's a lot that pops up here in Yuba Sutter. So, and some of those are now getting funded as we go, so walkability is.
It's mainly in Yuba, though, because of flood length.
Okay, any additional board comment?
Well, I'd just like to thank you for the presentation. Very well done. But I'd also like to thank our Chair Bradford for being on this committee at SECOG and going down and attending and bringing our concerns to you guys and sharing everything back with us. So, thank you, Gary.
Thank you, John. Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing no. Thanks for coming up, James. Really appreciate it. And thank you, Kevin and Sam, as well, for joining in the presentation. So many exciting things. I'm certainly very excited. Supervisor House mentioned about an opportunity to revisit the Plumas Lake specific plan and really looking into the future and shaping the design of the rest of that community to make it more walkable, safe, more diversity of housing. So I think there's a lot of great stuff there, and I look forward to working with the community and others to get that done, so. Great. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, next, we're going to move on to 72 2025. Received presentation from Agency on Aging Area Four and other agencies regarding the age-friendly community initiative.
Morning, everyone. My name is Germaine Aon. I am a program manager with Agency on Aging Area Four, and I'm representing the Aging and Disability Resource Connection of Yuba and Sutter Counties. So today, I'm presenting and asking for your support to joining the AARP age-friendly livable community. Today, I will also be joined by Janique Lee, the program manager of Freed Center for Independent Living, Marnie Sanders, the executive director of Blue Zones Project, Kristy Woods, the associate state director of AARP, and myself, Germaine Aon, with Agency on Aging Area Four. So what is the AARP age-friendly livable communities? So these were established in 2012 to help communities prepare for demographic shifts. This includes towns, cities, counties, and states committed to becoming more age-friendly, provides access to national and global research models and best practices, equips local leaders and residents with resources for assessing the needs of community members and developing an action plan. Membership in the AARP network of age-friendly states and communities is free. And as we've heard today and how we're wanting to move forward, we always have to remember to, to all of the developments that are coming, to be age-friendly. Membership provides a community with public recognition for committing to becoming age-friendly, resources for identifying and assessing community needs, access to technical assistance and expert-led webinars, and support and best practice materials provided to us from AARP. So again, what is age-friendly? An age-friendly community makes it easier for people to live their best lives at every age by offering diverse housing options, reliable transportation choices, accessible public spaces, opportunities for social engagement, and promoting health and access to information. Why age-friendly? Well, as we've heard, there are a lot of demographic shifts. By 2030, for the first time in California history, older adults will outnumber those under the age of 18. And by 2060, nearly one in four US residents will be at least 65 years old. Because of these shifts, states are joining the network. California joined in 2021 as the eighth state in the network. Hundreds of towns, cities, and counties across the nation have enrolled in the AARP network of age-friendly states and communities. In California, 19 counties are currently members with a total of 93 participating cities and counties. There are eight domains of livability. They include civic participation and employment, housing, communications and information, respect and social inclusion, health services and community supports, social participation, outdoor spaces and buildings, and transportation. These eight domains of livability are used by many towns, cities, counties, and states enrolled in the AARP age-friendly network to organize and prioritize their work to becoming more livable for both older residents and people of all ages and abilities. So the membership in the network of AARP serves as an organizing structure for making community improvements, fosters partnerships among community groups and local stakeholders, provides resources for identifying and assessing community needs, enables community improvements that benefit people of all ages. And this membership provides local leaders with access to expert-led webinars and technical assistance for livability professionals, connections to a national network of more than 700 enrolled communities, a private group forum for discussions, asking questions, and finding answers, and support, guidance, and best practice resources from AARP about creating an action plan and documenting its progress. So the program steps. Members of the AARP network of age-friendly states and communities commit to an assessment process and cycle of continuous improvement, the steps of which typically require the member community to: establish a way to include older residents in all stages of the age-friendly process; conduct a community needs assessment; develop an action plan and evaluation plan based on the assessment results and submit to AARP for review; implement the plan and work towards its goals; assess the impact of implementing the plan and submit progress reports; sharing solutions, successes, and best practices across the age-friendly network, and repeating all of these steps. And we have already done a lot of this work. So we received funding from the California Department of Aging to develop a local aging and disability action plan aimed at addressing community needs. We conducted community engagement by conducting focus groups. We held a total of eight focus groups. We had 75 participants representing older adults, individuals with disabilities, caregivers, rural residents, Hmong, Latino, LGBT veterans, and low-income communities. We also conducted a multilingual online and paper survey. We used an example from an age-friendly Minnesota survey, and we received 297 responses from older adults, individuals with disabilities, and caregivers. We translated this survey in multiple languages. We had English, Spanish, Hmong, and Punjabi. And after all of this work, we developed a data map. We worked with a consultant. We worked with our partners Freed Center for Independent Living, Yuba Sutter-Kaluza United Way, among other community-based organizations. And we developed a work group approach. For the first work group, we reviewed all of that data that we received. We involved the community, and we identified some of the issues that exist in our community. We identified the programs that exist, the gaps, and those programs that already are improving the lives of all the people that we're serving. So we are looking for ways of how to support those programs that are already in existence. Part two of the workshop, we developed actionable strategies and objectives. So based off of the data that we reviewed and the strategies that we came up with, we had a deeper dive into it, and we brought our community together where we developed strategic objectives following the SMART Plan. So with all of this process, we have identified five key goals. The first goal is affording housing and emergency preparedness. The second is transportation and community mobility. The third is healthcare and caregiving. Fourth is food security and nutrition. And the fifth is social engagement in a livable community. So all of these goals align with the master plan for aging that was published in 2021. The master plan for aging is a 10-year plan that was published by Governor Newsom in hopes of, in 10 years, meeting all of those goals. So we have partnered with multiple organizations. As I said before, we developed or are developing the Local Aging and Disability Action Plan in conjunction with Agency on Aging Area Four, Freed Center for Independent Living, and Yuba Sutter-Kaluza United Way. We have also involved the Blue Zones Project, and their focus aligns with the focus of the master plan for aging, the Local Aging and Disability Action Plan, and the AARP Livable Community, which is to transform community environments to promote health, longevity, and well-being. We also have involved multiple ADRC partners. For example, the Yuba Sutter Homeless Consortium, Yuba Foothills Agricultural Community Center, Alzheimer's Association, Yuba Sutter Transit, Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health, Hmong and Latino Outreach Centers, Camp Townville Community Partnership, Yuba Sutter Mules on Wheels, Yuba and Yuba City Commissions on Aging, AARP, among other partners. So what is the outcome expected from joining the AARP? By joining an age-friendly community, Yuba and Sutter Counties will gain access to resources that support community-specific initiatives and align with global best practices. This membership will demonstrate our county's commitment to creating a supportive, inclusive environment for residents of all ages. And so this is our call to action. So joining the AARP age-friendly network is a proactive step towards a stronger, more inclusive community. It aligns with our local aging and disability action plans. And so we're asking for your support and commitment to make this happen. Communities that are be submitting, as well as a letter of commitment from the Board of Supervisors. So I'm presenting today to the Board of Supervisors, and I will also be presenting March 11th to the Sutter County Board of Supervisors. So with that, I would like to invite Janique with Freed Center for Independent Living, Marnie with Blue Zones Project, as well as AARP.
Good morning, Supervisors. Marnie Sanders, Blue Zones Project, Yuba Sutter. And as I was listening to German's presentation, it just became more and more evident why we are in collaboration with the great work that they're doing in our community, and I'm just here to express our support of being part of this membership to AARP. The work that Agency on Aging does in the community, and I think adding this layer to the work that's being done, is in perfect alignment with the work that Blue Zones is doing in trying to create more health and well-being within our community. In particular, at Blue Zones, we say we want to reach everyone everywhere with different kinds of ways to become healthier and happier and have more well-being. And so this membership can help to create access to opportunities. We're talking about transportation, more accessible transportation, really prioritizing food and social connection, which is so important. In particular, we've had those challenges coming out of COVID, so we really need to help to create an environment where we can celebrate and support our aging and those who are disabled. So we are in full support of that, and we want to come alongside them and help them to do that. And it's also just in the work that Blue Zones does to really try to help to leverage and convene with local partners to do this kind of work. And so we're always so happy to be in partnership. And so thank you for allowing me a few moments to support this wonderful initiative.
Good morning. Janique Lee, I'm the Program Manager for Yuba Sutter Freed Center for Independent Living. And we are in partnership with Area 4 on Aging and the Aging and Disability Resource Connection that is moving this forward to be an AARP livable community. And as I've been sitting here today and watching what has happened, first of all, I'm really impressed with the sidewalk and bike lane initiative that you guys approved earlier for my, actually, I'm District One, and that's where most of that is happening, and how that aligns, how this project aligns what you guys are already doing and promoting and have been for years, how this aligns with your Commission on Aging, that I've been attending those meetings, and they have been attending ours, and we have been a partner with them, that this, becoming an AARP livable community aligns all of these different, so many different agencies, so many different projects, the 30-year plan we just saw, all of those things coming together to make Yuba County a better county.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. My name's Kristy Woods, and I'm the Associate State Director for Advocacy and Community Outreach at AARP. I'm here on behalf of the 6,500 AARP members in Yuba County to express our support for the Age Friendly Community Initiative. AARP is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization dedicated to empowering people to choose how they live as they age. Locally, one of our top priorities is promoting the creation of livable communities, and we are strongly committed to helping build age-friendly communities across California and across the nation. We know the more connected, engaged people are with their community, the less likely they are to age successfully and remain living in their homes as they age, as the vast majority of people wish to do. That's why AARP California has worked alongside public officials, community leaders, and residents across the state to plan and enact changes that will improve the lives of older adults and people of all ages and abilities. To date, more than 100 California cities and counties have enrolled in AARP's network of age-friendly states and communities, representing nearly two-thirds, or over 28 million of the state's population. Enrolling in the network provides municipalities with a framework to address critical issues like affordable housing, transportation mobility, and reducing social isolation. As was mentioned earlier, California's population is aging. In fact, by 2030, one in four Californians will be 65 and older, and by 2035, the number of adults over 65 will be greater than the number of children under 19. These statistics demonstrate the importance of having a plan in place for this changing demographic. We are grateful to the Agency on Aging Area 4 to helping to facilitate the planning process with community leaders, stakeholders, and residents. We also appreciate your commitment as elected officials to older adults and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have some board comment or questions on this item?
Just to build off what Janique said, I think we are doing a great job. I think there was five elements. One of them was affordable housing, which we absolutely are implementing via various methods, ADUs, partnering with local NGOs like Habitat. Transportation, we talked about how we're moving to that Uber model for microtransit. In food, we are a huge supporter of our local food bank for food security. And the other one was caregiving. We increased our salaries for IHSS workers so that we could create a more sustainable wage for them and improve them. There was a fifth element that I was curious about that perhaps you could comment on, and that was the social inclusion. I assume that senior centers and places of recreation for them would be in that category, and I feel like maybe that is an area where I'd love to hear, get more in the weeds for me, and give me exactly what the plan is that you would see, or your vision, or how we can collaborate on that, because I know that I feel like there's a need there, and I was wondering what your guys' thoughts were on that area.
Yeah, definitely. So in regards to social engagement, what we're wanting to do is involve, as you said, the senior centers. When we were conducting focus groups, we conducted one with the Hmong Outreach Center and the Latino Outreach Center, and both said that they had a presence at the senior centers, however, they felt excluded. So how do we involve those communities into the senior centers? So we're wanting to work with the senior centers on developing something where they can, where the community members can feel more accepted. We're also talking about the development of 211, so about involving and getting the word out about local programs that are already in existence. So that would be a great way of involving the community. And we're also talking about developing volunteer opportunities. So we currently, at Agency on Aging, have currently developed a volunteer program called Caring Callers, which is a telephone reassurance program where friendly callers are calling people out in the community who are feeling isolated. So we're wanting to develop more volunteer opportunities to engage the community, whether it's coming in person or just providing some support over the phone.
The callers program sounds nice. I'm curious, what senior centers do the Hongs and Latinos feel excluded from?
The one that they mentioned was the Yuba City Senior Center.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because we don't have one in Yuba County, which is what we need. And we can make it inclusive, but we need it.
Yes.
Through the chair. I'd just kind of like to thank you for the presentation and all you are doing, but I'd like to echo Supervisor, your comments about needing a senior center. There's, I know more than needing a senior center, we need a program that's ready to push things forward, engagement activities for our seniors. And I went on a tour of a new Casa de Esperanza facility in Marysville, and it's right next there, it shares a big, giant senior center-like room with the Tower Theater, the old Spanish Theater on D Street. But there's lots of those buildings, lots of those spaces that we could get into, but we need programs to push activities for seniors forward, not faith-based programs. We need some community-based programs. If I could have anything to say on the Area 4 on Aging, it's keep our seniors fed and start pushing forward with the ideas on the senior center.
Definitely.
Additional board comment or questions? Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing that, it did sound like there was an ask of the board in this, so if there's board consensus, I would ask staff to maybe look into that further and bring something back to us.
See, just need a motion for us to do a letter, I believe, of support. And then we're committing to doing all the things that we're already doing and a senior center.
If I could, through the chair. So we can't take action on an item today, but the board can definitely direct staff to bring back something at a future board meeting.
Thank you.
I agree. Okay, looks like we have consensus, so please bring something back. Okay, so we have one more special presentation, but it is about 30 minutes, and so we are going to take a quick, very, very quick break. We will, five minutes, and so at 10:46, we will resume the presentation. So.
Yubasutterlives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
In the morning light, the cameras start to roll. Yubasutterdod, oh, I've watched the stories unfold. Tune in on Tuesday, the news comes alive. You are water agency, making sure we thrive. Yuba City Council, with Mary still in view. Yubasutterdod life, it's the truth that comes through. Union on Tuesday, the news comes alive. You are water agency, making sure we thrive. Yuba City Council, with Mary still in view. Yubasutterdod life, it's the truth that comes through. Yubasutterdod life, it's the truth that comes through. You're the starter done life. It's the truth that comes through. Union on Tuesday, the news comes alive. You are water agency, making sure we thrive. You're the city council with Mary's bill in view. You're the starter done life. It's the truth that comes through. You've got started on life. It's the truth that comes through.
Through the heart of the valley, we rise so bright. Where the news flows freely in the morning light. You were started on life where truth comes alive. Every Tuesday's a journey. It's where we thrive. Watch it unfold. You were started on life in the heart of our home. Be informed, be wise. You were started on life. We capture it all. Policy debates hear the people's call. With you was started on life, you'll never miss a beat. Special reports hit hard, shining a spotlight. You were started on life. You were started on life.
You've seen signs marking some of the gems in Marysville. They're produced by Sapphire Sign Company, providing something small, large, and mobile. With decades of experience, Sapphire Signs has pioneered local production of a variety of signs like temporary campaign style signs, welcomes for unique events, building signage, event promotion, and vehicle customization. Need a sign? Make it a gem from Sapphire Sign Company on the web at sapphiremarketinggroup.net. Sapphire.
For you today, a lot of pictures, I think that will be very depulsive of what we do. So certainly thank you for this opportunity to allow me the opportunity again to tell you about what we've been up to in code enforcement for the last year. This presentation will focus on calendar year 2024. I'll tell you, it's always exciting to have this put together because as you go through the year, you kind of forget about what you've done and going through the content and the cases that we've worked on, it really brings it back to the front and center about all the great things that code enforcement is accomplishing in, in the county. And I hope that what you take from today is some excitement and enthusiasm about what this team is bringing again to the county. Before I really dive into this, I want to get started with foundationally what it is code enforcement's responsible for. I think your board is fully aware that code is responsible for the identification of public nuisances, especially as it relates to properties and property maintenance and to cause those nuisances to be abated. Now by ordinance, the abatements are encouraged to be primarily through voluntary compliance and then only when necessary to be through official action. And so something new for us is, is your board strategic priorities. And so as I go through these slides today, keep in mind, much of our focus has been through those strategic priorities that your board has set. For code enforcement, that was primarily safety and natural resources. So for safety, it was that there was an increased focus of effort in our prime commercial corridors. And it was, it was interesting that it aligned with the Uba County Ordinance Code and that the ordinance code tells us that we should prioritize our prime corridors, our entry points and urbanized areas in the county. So these do align quite well. So last year I caused our vehicles to be marked for easy identification so people knew when we were out in the field and could see us. The division is also actively identifying properties in those corridors for a code enforcement response, and we've begun enforcement on those properties. And of course, we have continued efforts to keep our public areas free from the storage of personal property and that, that generally relates back to our homeless community. For the natural resource side of things, it included safe access to our public lands. I'll tell you, you know, the, the entire code enforcement team for quite a number of years has been very dedicated to the continuous cleanup of our waterways and maintaining that safe access. I specifically helped out with the Feather River setback levy ordinance this year. Our deputies that are assigned to code enforcement are enforcing that ordinance and, and we do have our maintenance crew that's out there regularly cleaning up. So we're going to continue those efforts for your board strategic priorities for us. And I think that the, the team is doing a great job. So speaking of team, this is, this is the team as it is currently. We've had a few changes since the last time I gave your board a report, but I, I'm happy to mention that we're, we're stable. We're fully staffed again and our newest addition, I think is just a couple of weeks in the position. So it's a, it's a big team. It's an incredible team. I think that, that you're looking at one of the hardest working teams in Uba County, if you don't mind me saying so, and they're helping to make this a better place to live, work and recreate. I did invite them here today. I think that your board mentioned last year that you'd like to see them. They are all here with exception, I think of three. So I'm happy that they get to see and participate in what we're doing today. Seemed like there was a, a big theme in some of the presentations today about partnerships and cooperation, and it, it's funny that I was prepared to talk about the same thing. I, I always want to acknowledge the agency and departments that we work with. This slide doesn't include them all, but it is representative of what it takes to get the work done. These relationships are extremely valuable and the synergy that comes from teamwork produced by these, it produces innovative solutions and better outcomes for those that we serve and carry out the policies set by your board. I'm going to try and point out some of those cooperative efforts as we go through this. So, so let's look at some numbers to start out. So in 2024, we added 540 new cases to our caseload. You can see that the department closed 493 during that same period and what you can't see below the bar, there's, there's an active caseload of 2024. Now, I, I want to point out that there isn't a one-to-one relationship on these cases. So the 493 didn't come from the 540. There are overlapping years, hence the ongoing caseload. And I think your board is aware of that, but I just want to make sure that that was pointed out to you. We like to break it out by community. This is, you can see the two top communities that receive code enforcement activity are Linda and Olivehurst, followed by Plumas Lake and West Linda. We also took the opportunity to break it out by supervisory district. You can't see the bottom and whose district is who, but this will be made available for your board after today's presentation. So you can see which districts have, have the highest numbers or the most activity. So you're absolutely welcome. This is a, this is a, a good slide and there is value to this slide. This is a five-year snapshot of our, our trends in code enforcement. And you can see that the trend is that the, the teal or the greenish color, blue color, whatever color that is, are the cases opened. Those are generally always much more than the cases closed, which are the mustardy yellow color. The exception to that is in 22 and 23. I mentioned this to your board last year. We were down to one officer at the end of 21. Our active caseload skyrocketed well above 1,200 cases. It was unmanageable, so it was a priority to get some of the older cases off the books. And that's why this exception of those two years exists, that, that's what we were doing. So, but the, but the actual trend is, is that cases opened is higher than closed. I would hope that someday that does shift and it does change and that we close more than we're opening and it gives us an opportunity to work on other items that are important to the community that don't always fall into health and safety. I'm going to touch on that in a little bit because we did add a couple of things and I, and I think that it does make a difference. So the other metrics that I have for you today are, are just our general stats. These metrics are a good gauge of workload and this is where staff spends a high amount of focused time in abating nuisances. I don't want to get overly involved in these numbers because they too are nuanced in that there isn't this one-to-one relationship. So they don't all follow suit based on what you're seeing. In other words, simply because you see that there's a notice and order at the top doesn't necessarily mean that an abatement was performed for that order in this year. There's overlap between the years, but what it does represent, of course, is the hard work that this team is doing in performing abatements and, and, and getting those nuisances removed from the county. This also kind of plays into the, the life cycle of, of the enforcement case. So as your board is aware, enforcement is progressive. We attempt to resolve cases at the very lowest level and only by official action if necessary. So as an officer progresses through the workload, they utilize all the tools in their belt, which may end up being a notice and order. And that's what it takes to abate the nuisance oftentimes. You can see there notice and order to abate 62. That's a big number. I don't have anything in reference that was consistent with last year, but. Access, but still need to make an inspection and enforce an order. During our inspections this past year, you can see that we posted 52 buildings unsafe to occupy. That's also quite a large number. Of that, we, we wanted to call out to you that six of those were dwelling units that received relocation assistance. We have a program where if a building is posted unsafe and tenants are displaced, the owner may be financially responsible for that. And in this instance, we would, we would require them to pay the tenant. If they don't, we will advance the funds. Another big number, which is quite impressive, abatements completed 70. So these all had notice in order to abate, seven of them, the county performed and 63 of them, we were able to gain voluntary compliance, either from the owner doing it or a stipulation agreement. So marijuana cases, we kind of separate out. The bulk of these is going to be our partnership with Met U, which is through the sheriff's department. So many of those are going to be pursuant to criminal search warrants. We're going to go and assist the sheriff's department in the removal of plants. You can see just about 73,000. Their numbers are much greater because they did things that we didn't participate in. And then finally, cost accounting hearings, which is kind of the final step in our enforcement process for the recovery of costs. We bring those to your board as a hearing and we ask that you confirm those costs. So those are the numbers. So I'm going to start back with teamwork and synergy. And so this is a prime example, Met U, the sheriff's department Met U team, that fosters interdisciplinary cooperation with agencies like the Department of Fish and Wildlife. You can see the one in the lower right there, CD, FTA, or TFA, or whatever it is there. And I should know it, but I don't, but it's California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. So what you can, what, what this slide for me demonstrates is the camaraderie created by working together of these various agencies. And they all come together for the common goal of reducing illicit marijuana cultivation and its negative impacts on our communities and the environment. But certainly today's about code enforcement, not the sheriff's department. And so what I want to focus on is what's left after the marijuana has been seized and destroyed by law enforcement. It leaves things behind like unpermitted buildings, junk trash and debris, improper occupancy of recreational vehicles and hazardous electricals. So code enforcement's respond, responsible for the abatement of all of those things and it takes time and effort and sometimes money to do so. This is an example of an abatement last year that was pursuant to a marijuana criminal search warrant. We went in after the fact, it took us some time, but we were able to clean the property and get it back to how it's being assessed, which is unimproved vacant land. As your board is aware, we're also part of the vehicle authority for, it's a, it's called the service authority for abandoned, wrecked, dismantled or inoperable vehicles. So it's a three-member entity. The county is one, city of Marysville, city of Wheatland are the other two. The numbers you're seeing here, 293 vehicles, the county, these are public nuisance vehicles that come from both public and private property that we're removing. We, we towed 157. We call out specifically that 40 of them were boats, trailers and RVs. And I do that because those are a bit more challenging to get rid of and they cost a lot more money to get rid of as well. So those pictures depict what we're doing. You can see also of the 293 that we did, 136 were voluntarily abated. An exciting slide for me. So this, this program, what started out quite small continues to grow and always exceeds my expectation as to the importance of what these guys do in the county. So this is our hand crew. There are two guys that back last year were picking up debris by hand. And 2024, we operationalized new equipment. You can see it there in the picture. We had a new truck, a new dump trailer and a new mini excavator. This was through Measure K funding and it has allowed this crew to expand their capabilities, increase their performance and their productivity. We have their numbers there, 412,000, more than 412,000 pounds of debris removed by these guys in one year. Over 700 tires removed by these guys in one year. And you can see the previous years, 239,118 tires. So it, it's an incredible team, what they're doing, just two guys with the support of our sheriff's deputies that help them and the code enforcement crew that gives them a hand as well. Having this equipment isn't just increasing their productivity though, it also reduces the chance of injury. They find themselves in challenging situations and locations with topography and there's heavier items that they're able to remove. So this team will continue its efforts in cleaning up abandoned camps, waterways, roadside dumping, vegetation trimming and removal. I think it's paramount to what's happening in the county and we've added a couple of new duties to them, which I'll get to shortly. But this is just examples of, of like a homeless encampment. We don't see too many of those anymore in Uba County, but we are, you know, when we do, we take care of it. This is examples of illegal dumping, some roadside dumping and debris that they remove. And this is a, a kind of a drainage canal that they went in and had to hand clean up based on, on the steep slopes that, that keep the water flowing. I would submit to your board that it's hard to notice what they do, but if they weren't around, you'd certainly notice 412,000 pounds worth of debris. Which leads me to our partnership, which is amazing with the sheriff's department. I would say that it's probably second to none in the area. Their synergy created with this, this is a collaborative approach that bridges gaps in enforcement by combining capabilities of what code enforcement does and what the sheriff's office does. It provides officer safety for our code enforcement officers. As you know, we're dealing and interacting with the same folks that the sheriff's department is, and those folks sometimes become hostile and abusive. So these guys are there to help us where we need it. Originally their focus was with the heart team and outreach to homeless encampments. They still do that every day. They're working with camping and personal property enforcement and the removal of camps with our hand crew. They help code enforcement with property maintenance and enforcement. They're assisting with Met U and other marijuana enforcement, and they're also within our prime commercial corridor. These numbers that you see are very similar to last year and they represent things like stolen vehicle recoveries, confiscation of illicit drugs, including fentanyl, the removal of illegal guns from our streets and, and felony arrests. I, I want to point out 91 citations. I think that that's a big number. I'm going to kind of talk about some of those citations and what they mean. Certainly they're involved with vehicle abatements. So tremendous job and excellent partnership, second to none with the sheriff's office. So that, that brings me to some new stuff that I kind of want to talk about. So we wanted to participate a bit more in community activities and work on community concerns that may not fall directly within health and safety code violations that you would traditionally see. That, that lower right picture, that's Deputy Bronson being interviewed by a local Sacramento news station. And we were trying to get some, some messaging out to the communities that we were going to start looking at things like sign enforcement, which you can see here, which is a great collaborative effort with our planning department. They're identifying signs that are in the right of way, creating hazards. It takes our hand crew to remove them, sometimes by using the excavator. But you know, if these signs remain up, they oftentimes make their way to being littering. And so we're writing citations for littering and improper signs. Another big one that has been important to me is vehicle parking. So these are all representative of what the sheriff's deputies are assisting with. We have vehicles that completely block the sidewalks in the upper left there that you can see. Anybody wanting to use the sidewalk is forced then to walk into the vehicular traffic lane and could be struck by a car. Similarly, the upper right, you've got a guy kind of on the sidewalk and kind of in the street, which is causing that other vehicle to cross the double yellow line. Incidentally, both of these are in a school zone. And so tickets can be written for this type of activity. The lower left, you can see our orange stickers on those two recreational vehicles. What we see here is vehicles that are using the street for storage improperly. And not only are they partially on the street, they're also parking the landscape strip. And then finally, the semi truck in our residential areas. These are not things that are consistent with that land use and should not be parked there. The roads were not designed or constructed for this type of weight. And so those two could be subject to arrest. Where our hand crew is unable to, based on size, clean up a property, this is an example of a beautification contract that we have, which is an open purchase order. This is an example of a, a very large mess at the end of Third Avenue. It was partially county property. There's a drainage ditch off there to the right. This contractor is available to us at any time. We call him, he shows up with his crew and they're able to quickly clean up a property with funds that would have, if, if this debris had entered into that waterway more than it already had, would have impacted our waterways and water quality. And then lastly, this one's pretty exciting for our community stuff. First time ever code enforcement had been invited to something like this. This was career day at Olivehurst Elementary, couple of officers, our hand crew and one of our deputies showed up. We were able to hang out with the kiddos for a couple of hours and, and talk to them about what we do and how we enforce public safety rules. So that was a really fun time for, for the team. I would say that, you know, we, we may not be perfect or great in everything that we do, but as you navigate or drive the community roads in the county, I would hope that you won't see established camps, you'll see clean and safe waterways, you won't see vehicles creating traffic hazards and you won't see illegal signs creating traffic hazards or becoming litter. I think these guys are doing a fantastic job. So that brings us to the before and after photos. So I had mentioned to you that we were, we had marked our vehicles. This is an example of a marked vehicle. I think they look great. It predated the new county emblem or logo, and so it's the older one. You can also see there to the front of the vehicle, there's some signs that we created. So when we're out doing abatements, we want to, we want to let people know it is Uba County conducting that abatement. And so let me just jump into this. Our abatements are, are very in size, very small to very large. This is an example of a voluntary compliance abatement. I want to, I want to point out before I jump into all of these, every single one of these that you're seeing today had a notice and order to abate and it was either resolved through voluntary compliance by county or through that stipulation agreement process. So this was a voluntary compliance. There's some white, white appliances and some structural hazards. They painted the property. I think it turned out looking very nice. This was an example of one in Brownsville that we did. This was county-led abatement. The property owner had essentially abandoned his property, allowed illegal dumping, didn't take care of it. So the county took its contractors in and abated that nuisance. This one was on Loop Road in Lumerica. This had a completely destroyed by fire, burned structure. There was a double wide mobile. It had an unpermitted modular that didn't get final occupancy, as well as recreational vehicles being occupied and junk trash and debris. County-led, by the way. This is an example of a stipulation agreement where we had issued an order for the burned structures and a new property owner came in and tore that structure down and will likely build something new in the future. This was a county-led abatement out in Wheatland on Lewis Road. This was an open and accessible building and we raised that building, made it a clean lot. This particular one, this is a single wide, single family mobile home. It was highly visible from Highway 70. It had been taken over by a biker group and become, converted into something other than a single family dwelling, again, highly visible from the highway. We were able to get voluntary compliance after issuing the order and working with the owner on that one. This is another voluntary compliance property on Fourth Avenue and Olivehurst. We, that house was raised as well. Highly visible, Olivehurst Avenue. This involved a couple of different parcels, some that were burned. We issued the order, were prepared to do the abatement and a new owner came in, was able to purchase the property and the stipulation agreement caused that one to be abated. This is an example of a voluntary compliance on Chapman Avenue in Olivehurst. This is another voluntary compliance where the house was removed and a new house was built in its place. removed and a new house was built in its place. Are you? This is, this was a stipulation agreement. This was a bad, bad home with some really weird, excuse me, really weird things going on on Fleming Way in Olivehurst. Took the sheriff's department, took a response from code enforcement, and a notice and order. New owner came in. We have a new productive home, very nice. This was another stipulation agreement on Pa. Also turned out very nice. Another one on Alicia. And here's one on Vine Avenue in West Linda. This one also stipulation agreement. I would submit to your board, too, on these things, that as these properties are abated and we have improvements. So in this particular instance, we didn't have a single-family home. We didn't have any established use. We just had junk and debris and a guy living in a car. And then someone came in, purchased the property, and is building a home. It's almost done. He got building permits. The assessed value of all of these properties that you've seen thus far will increase. And that means something. It increases the value of the tax rolls amongst other things. So some larger ones. So this is an abandoned car wash. This is in our prime commercial corridor on North Beale. This had been a nuisance property for many years and lots of debris being illegally dumped. We issued an order. We had the contractors ready to go. The owner came in at the last moment, said, I want to comply. He painted everything. We said, that's not going to do it. And so he agreed to demolish everything, and that's what it looks like today. Again, this is our prime commercial corridor, right across the street on North Beale. We'd already been doing work and have not completed that work yet, but we're also working on that parcel. This one is also, this particular property is also adjacent directly to the east of a parcel the county just purchased. So it's improving that whole area directly across from where Yuba Center Transit. This is one of the largest messes in the county. It was over a decade old of a case. We had orders issued on this. We had, our contractors were ready. We were ready to perform the abatement. An owner came in, was able to negotiate with the property owner. And instead of having the county clean it up, we had a stipulation agreement. Our costs were paid. He's completely, well, not completely cleaned, but mostly cleaned the property. We have a few things to go. He has building permits and is rehabbing each of the apartments that are on that property, and they're coming along nicely. Huge win for the county and for code enforcement. This is another huge win. This one is directly behind the property that the county just recently purchased. It's on the corner of Hammond and Smartsville and Rupert. And we were, we had the contractor walk. We were prepared with our order to abate this nuisance. Someone swooped in at the last moment. We did a stipulation agreement, and we have a very clean property. After the county cleaned its property and removed all the vegetation, this would have been highly visible from North Beale. And in this instance, I think we have a success. This particular project was, we have some videos on our webpage regarding this property. It probably was the worst in the valley of properties where we had code enforcement issues, acres of problems. It was situated right next door to Anderson's Auto Wreckers. So you couldn't really tell the difference, other than in this aerial, you can see that Anderson's actually kept a much nicer lot than they did. And so they're directly to the north. A new owner came in. We had a stipulation agreement. They cleaned the property, saved the taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars, if you will, because they used their funds for these cleanup, for this cleanup. It's not complete yet, but we do have rehabilitation going on in the two dwellings, and believe that's going to be a great success also for the county. This is up in Oregon House. This is Manzanita Lane. This will be the exception to the rule in that I tell you there's going to be notice and order in order for the county to do an abatement. In this instance, we responded with the sheriff's department. There was a fire that could have been quite devastating on that modular home, mobile home there. And because of what we saw and the immediacy of what was going on, we performed what's called the summary abatement. And that is summary in that we're not giving advance notice. We did clean that property. It was quite quick. It made a huge improvement to the community there. In fact, you're going to see this one, I think at one thirty today, there's a post hearing. So that's it for the amazing pictures. And I do think they speak volumes about what this team is doing. I'm not going to spend any time on this. This is our roadmap for the future, for 2025. We have about, these are up to bat, if you will, if you want a sports analogy. And we have about thirty on deck, ready to go. And so this list is not concrete by any means. If something more important comes up or more immediate comes up, we will have to shift and deal with that. But we do have a path moving forward. And so that's it for me. That was a lot of talking. So in closing, again, thank you, Board, for allowing me this opportunity to let you know what code enforcement has been up to. I do want to thank the county administrator's office, county council, the sheriff's office, in fact, everybody that helps code enforcement achieve what it is trying to achieve. Certainly, the financial support of Measure K and the Water Agency helps us get these properties cleaned up. I had invited Measure K Oversight Committee, I believe Rich is here. Thanks for coming. Most of what you see there is funded through Measure K directly or the Water Agency. And so we wouldn't be able to do it otherwise. And so I think these positive impacts that we're having are thanks to all of you and all of them.
I had three questions. One, I assume the maintenance guys work a nine to five, Monday through Friday?
Their schedule does shift. It depends. They do tend to follow Public Works. They're stationed out at Public Works Corp yard. So sometimes they may start at seven AM or even as early as six, depending on the time of year.
There's a fourth Saturday cleanup that is done. Is there something that can be done to collaborate with, between them and Saylove on that fourth Saturday cleanup? Like give them a flex day and give them that Monday off, or however that works?
Absolutely.
Because that would be great to see some partnership there.
If you have advance notice of your date, code enforcement has historically participated in, not necessarily moving the debris, but we go out and we send notices to each of our cases, especially in your district, Supervisor Fuer. And then we go around and we encourage people to participate that day. And so absolutely, if we know when that date is, I will get it on their schedule. If they're available, they will be there for sure.
And so we have our garbage cleanup day. That's the biannual. But I'm talking about every month, they have a Saturday cleanup in Yuba County. And so whether they're up at Bullards Bar, cleaning out that area, or they're down at the railroad tracks, it's every fourth Saturday of every month. That would be fantastic for them.
Okay.
All right. And I had two more questions. I'm short.
I wanted to add on to your comment, the five-three-oh off-road recovery, also very active with Saylove, and now is doing a committed cleanup. And they've gone up, cleared by Bullards, and winched cars up the hill and hauled them off. I think like, I don't know, twenty or so cars that were abandoned up there. So.
Yeah, we do reach out to them from time to time as a resource for individuals that maybe we're going to issue an order on. It's like, here, let's try and exhaust all of these resources that are available to you, like the five-three-oh club or Saylove, to see if they can get some assistance prior to having code enforcement take it to the next level. So that's some of the tools in the tool belt of these.
So the second question, I'm super excited about all the beautiful after pictures. That's great. You mentioned that we want to get that yellow bar higher for closed cases. What else can we do on our end? We've increased funding, and that's why you have so much staff. So that's fantastic. Is there anything else we can do to help make that closed cases ratio higher or increase those?
Yeah, it's a very good question, and I'm not sure I have a great answer for you, and I might have to get back to you on it. But I do think that funding and consistent funding for the department is paramount. I think that having, as you know, this team is still relatively new. I'm not going to introduce them, but you can all see them sitting there. And when I say relatively new, I mean three years or less. And it takes three years to learn the job, because there's a lot that we are responsible for. And so I'm not suggesting that funding was the cause of people leaving, because I don't think that it was. I think it had to do with a lot of other things. But having that consistency definitely keeps the machine well-oiled and being efficient. And so I'm looking forward to this next year to see if this full team can cause a change in what we see as a norm.
Awesome, awesome. I know that one of the things we did in addition to funding was we funded a, is it the beautification contract?
Yes.
And so by creating that fund to let you redo stuff that helped in some way. So any other creative ideas like that that would be of assistance to want to do? And then my third question, man, it's so hard to keep everything in the head, was you mentioned that your focus was on health and safety, and that now that that's complete, there were some other things that you might want to consider, like expanding to. What would those things be?
Well, I think that we're doing it. So health and safety is still going to take top priority, and we certainly have no shortage of those types of complaints or concerns from the community. But I think that this balance between open and closed cases and being able to get to other types of complaints, I think I had reported to your board a couple of years ago, you may remember the slide, but we get complaints about people leaving their garbage cans out too long after garbage day. Like, I don't know that we'll ever get to that. But certainly the signs, certainly the vehicles that are impacting the community and adjusting what the community sees perceptually in those common areas that we all share, I think that's where the focus should be as we move forward. And so what I've shown you, what we've encroached upon, we'll do more and more with, and that's where the focus should be for.
Through the chair. I just wanted to thank staff over at the code enforcement department. I know it's not rewarding work, per se, for an individual to want to go up and clean up somebody else's messes. But the work you do every day, it really improves our county, improves our tax base, and allows us to move forward as a county. And I grew up in Olivehurst and Arboga area, so to see all the cleanup that's going on out there, thirty years in the work, or in the making. So I really appreciate all the work you're doing. And hopefully you'll stick around and continue to move forward with us. And Jeremy, just any chance you get to recognize those folks, go ahead and do it.
And I'm glad that you did, because they are amazing.
Through the chair. Jeremy, on the one slide, you said there was five hundred and forty new cases, four hundred and ninety-three closed. And did you say there's two hundred and twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four active? Or was that the year 2024? And how many are active?
That was the year. The active caseload, as I think it was listed as February fourth, is four hundred and twenty-six. That number moves all the time. But back in twenty-one, it was over twelve hundred. So. I think I had mentioned to your board, and that was a very good question, Supervisor Messick, because I think I had mentioned to your board last year that, and that previous year's slide, we had other years where marijuana was still kind of in the fold of what we were doing. We've not yet been able to really get back to that. So much of the marijuana that we're doing still is through the sheriff's department assistance and Met U. I think we had a handful this year, maybe six or seven, that code enforcement actually led on. And so in years past, say, 2015 through 2020, we were seeing upwards of two hundred cases additional. So that five forty then would be seven forty or eight forty. And we don't always resolve the marijuana cases in the same year either. So just keep that in mind, is that those numbers do move a lot, and it depends on what we're doing.
So just a couple comments. So thank you to the team for all the work you do, and really appreciate you being here today. And also, love the before and after pictures. It's amazing, and it's great to see the huge difference. You know, I think it's really important. If we don't, as you kind of said, if we're not driving by these particular things every single day, right, we're not necessarily aware of the big differences that are being made. And so having this presentation really helps us all be aware. And also, I really appreciate the sign-in parking enforcement that you've started to do a little bit as well. I know it doesn't seem necessarily as sexy, as important as some of these other things that really, really need to be cleaned up. But it can get out of hand, too, particularly the signs. And I know when you've done that down in the Plumas Lake area, it's made a huge difference, the way the community looks. And so it's appreciated.
Thank you.
So anything else from the board?
On the parking thing, I was a little bummed on the one picture, because, man, that was a nice semi. That poor guy can't park it in front of his house.
We have a nice truck parking over on Highway sixty-five for exactly that reason. So.
I don't make the rules, man. I just enforce them. No. But they are incompatible uses, and certainly we want to try and keep that neighborhood feel, a neighborhood feel.
Yep. Any public comment on this item?
Before I leave, I'll leave you with a thought. Please reach out to me if there's anything that you need. And I would say, you know, it's, as fun as it is for me to be up here and present what I'm presenting to you, I don't always know exactly what you want. And so if there's something that you want to see different next year, please let me know what you think that might like to be, and we'll see if I can bring that forward to you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is correspondence, and it's as listed on the agenda. There is one item. So then we'll move on to board and staff member reports. Supervisor Vasquez?
Moving ahead.
Supervisor House? I just wanted to say, it has been a pretty overwhelming task, filling all of the committees and commissions. But I do appreciate all the applicants that we get, and anybody who has previously served. And if there was an adjustment made by a selection that I made today or any other day, it's not, it's not easy. But to move the county forward, we have to have the best applicants in place, and I appreciate those who applied. So thank you.
Thanks. Supervisor Fuer?
There's lots of things by lots of staff. I really do appreciate, whether it's moving TVs, because they're tall, and they're on the ball and proactive, or if it's the great cleanups that we had here in Olivehurst, as we saw, I think half of the projects looked like they were Olivehurst or West Linda. So I'm really happy about a lot of the things that staff does. I did attend a tip dinner. It was wonderful. They honored Mr. Rich Webb there, who I believe is the chair of that particular organization. And so it was very nice. And I appreciate our IT guy getting our monitors fixed. Again, we have a proactive staff that is getting things done.
Thanks, Supervisor Messick.
Just a whole slew of community events coming up. Five Ks, there are Baki Five Ks coming up here this weekend, I think. And I know a bunch of us are probably attending the Baki, other festivities. The four-H Color Me Run will be March fifteenth, and it seemed like there was another one coming up. Anyhow, Yuba County Search and Rescue Dinner, March twenty-ninth. Many of you know I'm commander of the Yuba Center Sheriff's Air Squadron, and we have our dinner coming up May seventeenth. This is the number one best dinner to go to. And if anybody wants these flyers to put up in your offices or anything, I've got a few of them here. I think that's about it right now.
Counsel?
Thank you.
Kevin?
Apologize for the monitor issue. It was tested yesterday after the vendor came in to upgrade our mic system. And it must have been something that was touched as part of that. So anyways, IT will be following up before any future meetings to make sure that it's functioning. Also, if you recall, the board mentioned something about the lighting in here, and so buildings and grounds came in and added some light. Hopefully, it's bright enough now that you can see the paperwork in front of you.
Good. Yeah.
All right. And I believe there was a letter that came in for, yes?
Yes, yes, I've got it on here.
All right. Thanks.
Sorry, I had one other thing, Gary. I believe today, there's a Blue Zones cooking class here at the Government Center. I'm trying to pull it up, from noon to one thirty. So does anybody want to pitch that that knows more about it? I put it on my calendar to go if we were able to. So Marnie already left. If you want to learn how to cook healthier meals today, from twelve to one thirty here at the Government Center, unsure which location, Linda Conference Room.
Which is the conference room adjacent to the break room.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, John. Is there anything from you? Okay, I just have a couple items. First, thank you, Vice Chief Messick, for running the last meeting when I was gone. Also, we got, we being me, the chair, and I think it was CC to Kevin, and also Supervisor Fuer, received a letter from Steve. Is it, I don't know if it's, is it Li or Lee, Steve Lee? He passed on from Wincheon area of China. The delegation from there has been here a couple times, and I know Supervisor Fuer has been working with them. They had some requests of the county in this letter related to partnerships and maybe sister relationship between the jurisdictions. And if it's the pleasure of the board, I'd like to establish an ad hoc committee with Supervisor Fuer and Messick to look into how we can look into those partnerships and those requests. So is that a consensus of the board to do that, right? I think I can. I think I can, with consensus, we can establish an ad hoc committee. We don't have to agendize it. Is that correct? I think.
Is there something on the agenda that we can connect this to today?
I think it's just the chair can make ad hoc committees, right?
Oh, okay. I'll check that.
Okay. You can confirm that. I think I can, I can do that at least with consensus, so.
And only other one note, their visitation will be in May. So unfortunately I invited them to the Bocai parade, but they didn't have the flexibility to jump that quick. But we will want to, I did provide a tour for them previously. So we will want to do a tour of various things in the county. Before, we were emphasizing walnut sales. Walnut market is starting to come back, but I'm sure there's other things that we will want to show them that in the county. And so we're probably going to want to put aside some sort of fund for that because last time when we did it, there was issues with the auditor.
Okay. Thank you. The, the committee can, can definitely look into that. So as with my fellow supervisors, lots going on. A lot of that, what I've been up to is on my website. Just want to mention I will be going to the NACO conference to represent Yuba County at the Ledge Conference. There's a transportation committee that I'm involved with on Saturday that will be happening there. And then on Tuesday, I'm working to get appointments with Congressman Lamalfa's office, Congressman Kylie's office and Senator Schiff's office to talk about some issues important to both Yuba County and the water agency. So I've been working with, with staff to get some information about that. And I still don't officially have those appointments set on my calendar, but, but I have been working with them. And then one more thing from a community standpoint, tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at the Wheatland High Cafeteria is a joint board workshop between Plumas Lake Elementary District, Wheatland Elementary District and Wheatland High School District to talk about the consolidation study that they're doing. So it'll be really interesting to hear how that's going and if anything's been found about that study with respect to consolidation, so. Okay. And if there's nothing else from board or staff members, we have a closed session up next. And then after that, we will be recessing until a 1:30 PM cost accounting hearing. As we had a break already and we only have one closed session, is the board good with just going into closed session? Looks like it'll be pretty quick, hopefully. You need, you need a quick break? Okay, well, the rest of us will be waiting for you in the, in the conference room. So we'll, we'll, we'll move pretty much right into closed session.
in Plumas Lake.